Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Branson's voice is not doing well this morning, so you have to listen to me. Announcements. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, March the 8th, 2019, at 9 o'clock a.m. in the community center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda. Amendments of the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting held Friday, February the 8th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Further discussion? Not Chrissy.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Steegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Dresch?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Action agenda. Resolution number 2019-02/22-08. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award the kitchen remodel and kitchen equipment portions of RFP 18-09 to Marmar Construction Company and Beltram Restaurant Equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Good morning, supervisors. Just a quick history on this project. In February of 2017, Clifford Schultz Architects was hired to design this kitchen expansion. In January of 2018, a board workshop was held to discuss the preliminary design and construction estimates and timeline with Schultz. Then in September of 2018, the board approved $1,230,000 for kitchen expansion, equipment, and lanai enclosure, consultant fees, and contingency. In front of you today is bid number 18-09. This bid has four components: the kitchen construction, the lanai construction, alternate number one bridal suite and service bar, and alternate number two kitchen equipment. There are two resolutions attached for your consideration, but this first one is strictly for kitchen construction and kitchen equipment. The alternate number one bridal and service bar is not recommended by management at this time. So the district received three bids for the kitchen, lanai, and bridal suite. The district's management team, we are recommending the lowest bidder, Marmar Construction, for $563,665 for this project. We have one bidder for the kitchen equipment, which is Beltram Restaurant Equipment. The bid came in at $324,625. Management is not recommending to purchase all the equipment listed in the bid specifications. The recommended price for the, or the recommended amount for the kitchen equipment is $185,513. The approved budget for the equipment was $335,000. So we, we are recommending, and the listing of the equipment that we're recommending is also attached.
I would like to, this is difficult because we're dealing with it with two resolutions, and I think it would be helpful to speak to both resolutions at the same time since they're truly overlapped. And in my review of, of the project with both the general manager and Cliff, and the discussions that I heard at the last meeting that I attended before I was sitting up here, I'm just not convinced that this is a good investment. We're looking at a million dollars that is not going to be a return on investment. As I expressed to Cliff, you know, even if you could convince me that if we spent a million dollars, we'd at least break even on the operation there, we're not even going to break even on the operation. So we're investing money in a project that we're losing money on. I understand the concept that it's an amenity, but this is an amenity that's barely 10 years old, and we spent several million dollars building it based on what we thought we wanted 10 years ago. And I want to be sure that before we invest another million dollars in it, it's really what we want, and it really meets the purposes that we want it for. If, if it's going to be an amenity that we're okay losing money on, that's okay, as long as we're not spending more money than we need to. Doing the expansion is going to require a loss of revenue during the construction period and even more expense afterwards because we'll have to hire more staff. I think there are things that we can do to improve the facility. I think that in my discussions with Cliff, there are some things that we can do to make the kitchen a better work environment without spending $600,000 on it. I appreciate that staff has done a good job of, of looking at the overall equipment needs of the kitchen and cutting the list down immensely. But I think we really need to look at the priorities for this project and whether this really is how we want to spend this money to get this clubhouse, or if what we really need is something else. My understanding is that the, the plan 10 years ago is we wanted kind of a grill room where people could go and enjoy a repast after an outing on the golf course or just for a leisure. And now we're talking about having more variety on the menu. Again, good things if we're making money on the operation, but is it really something we need to do on an operation that we're subsidizing?
There's, there's a given, in my mind at least, that we can't improve the kitchen operation without adding square footage somewhere. Be that storage, be that addition to the building, a separate building. We're stuck with what we have if we don't expand the square footage. The cost per square foot incrementally increases as you decrease the size. So the thinking in, in the original architect design was that we would build a kitchen that would sustain us for a lengthy indefinite period of time, probably longer than any of us are going to care. So that's where the numbers originally came from. If, if the consensus is that the number's too high and we need to do something on a smaller scale, I can support that, but if we don't add square footage, we're spinning our wheels.
I guess my suggestion is that perhaps before approving these resolutions, we have another workshop so that we can really work through this together as a board and community to be sure that the end result is what we're really looking for. And maybe it is what's designed, but I think we need to have further discussion because I don't think what is designed is cost, it just doesn't make sense cost-wise for the operation we have.
I've kind of been mixed on this the whole time we've worked on it. I think it's been three years that I originally brought this up, but I have to tell everyone that I'm kind of in favor of it. Only, I don't really like what we have to do, but I just don't see the club getting any bigger or better. If we don't expand the kitchen right now, we're, I'll guarantee you, we're going to do it in two years, and we're gonna, it's gonna cost a heck of a lot more, so. And just so everyone knows, I've struggled over this. I just think it's something that, what I want, me personally in Sun and Lake, and why I came here, I think we need to expand the kitchen, and we need to do that in lanai. We need to do a better job with our members and our residents, and I think this will do that. And that's why I moved to Sun and Lake. And so if anybody's got a problem with the way I vote, you can talk to me, but it comes from the heart that we have to spend this money and we have to do better for our community. And I think this is one more step towards the community. I know there's a lot of people that haven't, don't eat in our facility. Maybe they won't eat once we could order something besides chicken stitzel and hamburgers. But I just think it's the best thing for the community, and I'm going to vote in favor of doing this, and lanai. And I just want you to know that I just didn't take it simple. I thought about it a lot. I got up at 3 o'clock this morning, got up, my wife was up too, so it's just not something that we take without any, without any thought. But I'm going to support the project, and I think we should go on with it now. So that's all I have.
From purely a business standpoint, it'd be the dumbest thing we've ever done. It doesn't make money, to invest a million dollars on something that doesn't make money, just to me is not very good business. However, there are problems back there from what I've been told, although they have been changing over the course of the two years we've been discussing the project. But if indeed there is a space problem, and perhaps we need an area for collecting of dishes and cleaning of dishes, which is something that I've heard recently, I think we should figure out a way to make that happen, but not at an expense of remodeling the whole kitchen. I'll also just bring up one more thing, and I brought this up a year ago, and we still never addressed it, is that nobody's ever decided what we want the kitchen to be. And until we actually make that decision and tell Casper, or Cliff in this instance, here's what we want the ki, our kitchen to be, this is what we want to accomplish, I don't know how we can ever say we're going to spend a million dollars, or spend a half a million dollars, or spend a nickel, until we decide what we're doing. Do we want a hamburger place? Do we want to have banquets? I mean, I've recently been hearing about the amount of closings at the club. Well, I assume if we do this kitchen, there's going to be a lot more closings, because he's going to go out and solicitate more business along those lines. So we've got to decide what we want the kitchen to be, and then we have to do what we need to do to get it right. So should we spend money there? Yes. Should we spend a million dollars there? Absolutely not. So you can guess how my vote is.
Rather than meeting gets you the opportunity to speak last, which isn't always a whole lot of fun. I would kind of echo what Mike says. I don't think any of us take this lightly, and I can tell you for sure that sitting on this board has cost me money and friends and time and sleep, and this is a big part of it. I do think if we're going to progress as a community, we have to be more focused on residents, and we don't need to be focused on members. But typically, most of our members are residents. I think we need to do a better job of marketing to our residents and a better job of not closing the restaurant to à la carte dining for our residents. I seem to find myself in a position of voting for a lot of stuff I don't really like, and I think I find myself there again. We can't keep, you know, it's ready, aim, fire. We're on ready, aim, aim, ready, aim, aim, ready, aim, aim for almost three years. I don't think we can reset this again. So I don't like spending money that we're not going to get a return on, but then again, we spent money on a pool and don't get a return on it. We spent money on tennis courts and don't get a return on it. We're looking at spending money on a bocce ball court that's never going to get a return on it. So I guess the question is, is this an amenity that works for the residents of this community? And I think that's what we're all here to do. Suppose we should get public comment?
Yeah, I got one other comment. I'm also a resident here in Sun and Lake, and I hear you guys talking about spending a million dollars on a restaurant, which is going to cause losses to the community. You guys are saying that you want the best for the residents. Why don't we invest that money in infrastructure? So that way we have more people moving in, and that will pay more assessments to the community, and that will lower our assessment value, and we'll have enough customers for the restaurants, the tennis courts, and all the facilities. I don't see in any proposal so far expanding our infrastructure, not maintaining, expanding. That will bring money to the community. Why spend a million dollars of our money? Because I own several properties here, something's going to cost me more money. That's invested on developing the community so we have enough people to maintain restaurants and the whole thing. Thank you. My name is Gustavo Ibanez.
Hi, my name is Michelle Archer, and I have been in the catering business for years and years and years, and I do feel that the restaurant kitchen does need some help. Not a million dollars worth of help, but it does need some help. And you gentlemen do look like you're in a quandrum, but I would like to talk about the patio first. You named the restaurant The Island View, and if you close the patio, it will not be The Island View any longer. And I would propose that you put some windows there and slide it and make sure that it can stay a island view in a patio. I don't know any golf, golf course, a beautiful golf course, that does not have a patio. And closing that in for a conference room, and closing that in for making the dining room bigger, to me, would be devastating for the golf course. I really think that's a poor idea, when you can spend a lot less by keeping the patio and making it a dual purpose. The second thing I'm going to say is, for the kitchen, the biggest profit for you is catering, is your big catering jobs. That brings in the largest buck, not the little, the meals. And you should put more emphasis on that, and you do need more room for your kitchen. Catering is, but it's seasonal. But the problem is, you're not marketing, you're not, you're not putting your money into marketing, and you need younger people to come here. And that's where your money should be going, to marketing. And we don't have a good marketing program here. And I think that's where our money needs to go. We need more people here, and our money needs to go to marketing. And you can make the kitchen more user-friendly for the cook without putting a million dollars. And I suggest where you guys need to go is to other kitchens and research what they're doing, because there's new equipment out there that you don't need a lot of room that can service. There's smokehouses that this guy can use that can cook 2,000 pieces of meat at one time, and you don't need a lot of room. So this idea is that you can use kitchen equipment, and you don't need a lot, a lot of room to utilize on cooking.
The, let me understand the numbers. 562 plus 185, that's 747, right? That's what you're intending on spending for this? That's a better number than we started with three years ago. You do know, it's probably an overkill. That kitchen, you know, is now larger than the banquet room, which is probably an overkill, but I don't think you can go back to the drawing board. You guys have been fighting with this thing, and fighting with this thing for long enough. $750,000, let's, let's just do this, but let's do something else. Let's take some of the fat out of that five-year capital plan and make everybody feel better. You've got so much lard in that thing, and you know it's not going to happen, it can't happen. So let's be realistic about it and have, and have, you know, this, this building that we've got now, had I not pushed and pushed and pushed, we wouldn't, wouldn't even have the square footage we've got now in the existing, in the existing room. That wall at the end of the banquet room was the end of the building, and, you know, we fought it and fought it and fought it, and finally got it at least to that size. So I don't think it's a bad thing. No one likes to spend that much money, but let's, let's take a look at what else you got on the docket and, and be realistic about it.
Thank you, Dave. I just, I'll just interrupt for a minute. I think, if I'm not correct, the lanai will not be closed in. I mean, there's glass, and you can see, just so Michelle knows, that it's not going to be, it's wide open, where you can look and see the lake. I mean, it's all glass there. So it won't be, you will, you will be able to see the lake and, and everything like that, so. If I'm, no. The patio part will stay there that's out, outside of that, but there's glass. No, no. But you can see, you can see, just, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. Go ahead.
Pat Holmes, resident. We've been fooling with this for three years. If we don't pass this, we'll be doing, fooling with it for another 30 years. As Dave said, it's only, it's $750,000 well spent. The kitchen, it's amazing what they do with the space that they do have back there. Myself, if I was on the board, which I'm not, and thank you guys for being on the board, I would definitely vote for this. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I think it was, what, a year and a half ago, we put up all those curtains out on the patio? How much did we pay for that?
$15,000.
All right. And when I was on the board, we moved the cooler further out, extended the wall, took the dumpsters and put them over on the far side of the parking lot, and closed that area in, and expanded the kitchen. Now, we keep going on and on and on with this, and one of you gentlemen did say that people are complaining because the club has closed down too many times for outings and banquets, that the golfers, the residents, can't get in there and have a dinner. And I'll tell you something else. I've talked to a lot of people out there, and most of them tell me the same thing. I can go to the Outback or Red Lobster and get a meal a hell of a lot cheaper than I can at the club, so why am I going up to the club and paying $22 or $23 for a steak dinner on Friday night? Our prices are way too high on that menu, and that's why people are not coming in there. Now, you want to expand this kitchen, and you want to expand the, or redo the patio, but I'm going to tell you, it's not what the people really want. And I think before you make a decision, you ought to take a survey of the people in the community. Do they want to spend this million dollars on a kitchen and clubhouse that we cannot pay back or get any payback, as one of our board members said, for a number of years? Come on, gentlemen, let's use our brains. We've got more things to do in this community than worry about that kitchen. We've already done a lot of expansion on that kitchen, and a lot of you on that board right now don't remember it or weren't involved in it, but we have done it. And I had a brother that was a chef, and when I brought him into the club, we went back in that kitchen, and I asked him, what do you think of this kitchen? He says, man, this is a dream. I wish I had a kitchen like this where I work. I have about a third of this, and I, I can still put out as much as you guys do, so I don't know why we have to keep on doing this. Let's get our prices down, get people coming in, so that we can afford to do more, and not expand, like Dave said, the kitchen to the point where it's as big as the banquet room.
I do, I do have one other concern that I forgot to mention before, in that we took out, tentatively have taken out of the capital plan, the irrigation system for Deer Run. So right now, that has been tentatively pushed to 2025 or something like that. If that system goes down, and we have problems, we don't have the money. We lose the golf course, I don't care what kind of restaurant you've got, we've got serious problems. So I would just bring up that if it comes down, in my opinion, to the restaurant versus having money to fix the golf course, and I know a lot of people hate it, because all what they think we do is talk about the golf course, and there's a reason for that, because if we don't have the golf course, everybody's properties and things just fall apart rather quickly. So I'm concerned that we won't have the money in case we have a problem on deer. So just for all of us to think about that.
Further comment?
Supervisor Gilpin?
I'm, I would rather spend any monies that we have on the golf course, because as Ray said and others have said, that's what draws people to Sun and Lake. The kitchen, whatever we do to the kitchen, that money is not going to bring anybody into Sun and Lake, for the simple reason that 27 has 47 restaurants on it, and like somebody else said, I think it's cheaper. So to recap, the golf course is the important thing here, not the kitchen.
Larry Bertetto. A question, it was mentioned that you were doing this as an amenity to the residents. What type of figures do you have that the non-golfing people go to that restaurant? I go past that restaurant at 7:30 at night, and there's no cars. And you go down 27, as someone just mentioned, and there's all these places that are packed. The people in Sebring are not going to come here. Trust me. Other than a special banquet, they don't come here. If you're going to spend a million dollars, I don't golf anymore, but I think if you're going to spend a million dollars, put it on the golf course. If something happens, that needs to be fixed immediately. That's, that's our primary. People didn't move here for the restaurant. There's restaurants all over the place. And I remember looking at one of the original documents, and, and someone said, if we, we do all these things, we're going to have these great dinners, and those dinners, if you're going to have them, are going to be $35 and $40. People are not going to pay top price in this place. Thank you.
I'd just like to make one point. The conversation around the irrigation system on Deer Run, to say that we've postponed that project is a little inaccurate. I think we've tried to have our, pick out the critical pieces and prioritize them, to spread the costs over a number of years. And at the end of this fiscal year, barring something unforeseen, we will be in a good position relative to something unforeseen, we will be in a good position relative to reserves, and over that crisis to occur on Deer Run. We haven't budgeted money to fix it, but the money to fix it is available. I think that's a true statement, is it not?
For this year? Yes, this year we are investing four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our Deer Run course, and this includes a brand-new electrical system for the pump station and greens loops for all eighteen holes.
Right.
Is that, did I answer your question?
They should have been determined to be the critical pieces.
Those were determined to be the critical pieces of Deer for this year.
I think we have to paint the accurate picture. We're not painting an accurate picture to these people. I'm sorry. That's not true. We are spending four hundred thousand.
We haven't budgeted.
We are spending four hundred thousand, but they told us we had to do the rest of the irrigation at a million, three, four, whatever it is.
Million two.
Million two. That that's going to have to be done, and we pushed it. That's fact. It's been pushed, unless you guys were bringing it back in, I'm not aware of it.
I'm not arguing with you. It's a million two. It has been pushed out. If you had a catastrophic failure, it might be a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars, but it wouldn't be the entire, every loop of every hole. So, to say that it's a million two that could blow up tomorrow is not really accurate. I think the decision was that if we need to do that in conjunction with a redesign of Deer Run, and that's probably more than a million two, but it's also probably not in the next three to five years.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's saying we don't have, well, I agree. We have the money to deal with the catastrophe, so I think that's the truth. I think the issue here is, separate from that, we've got funds. The question I have, that I am not comfortable with, is are we spending them well with these projects? I think we need, in my mind, to be sure. It's the old adage of measure twice, cut once, and maybe you've measured two or three times, but I'm not sure we've got exactly what we need, and we know exactly where it's going and what it's going to accomplish versus what we want to have accomplished, because I'm not sure what we want to have accomplished. So, I'm just suggesting another workshop before we commit to a million dollars.
Other public comment?
You were asked, and I'm not sure if you did, have you, you hit all this hearsay. Some people want it, some people don't want it. You know, one of you would say, "Well, everybody I talk to wants it." The other one would say, "Well, everybody I talk to doesn't want it." Have you done any asking of the community, of the residents, how they do stand on it? Have we done that at all?
No.
I mean, they're the ones going to pay for it. I mean, we're the ones who are going to pay for it.
No.
It's not been done?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is that, why not? Why wouldn't you do that? Because those are the people, it's going to affect all of us, one way or the other, whether you like it or don't like it.
My understanding was there was a workshop in January of 2018 where there was public discussion about what was wanted and what wasn't. I'm just not sure we got there.
So, other than the people you talk to, you really don't know?
The people that came to the public workshop had an opportunity to talk, just like you did.
Okay. And was that a good turnout, or you don't know that for sure? But I wasn't here, so I, shame on me, you know? But I just go along with what I've heard here this morning from Charlie and Larry, and just for the record, I'm not in favor of it. I'm not, it's not that I don't think we need to do something to help out back there, but to, just to go in and do this, I just don't see how it's going to benefit us. I really don't. Show me on paper how this is going to benefit us, dollar-wise or whatever, versus our cost. So, that's all I have to say.
I just have one question. I'm a little nervous now after this little talk here. Is there any way we can postpone this until you fix this irrigation thing that you just talked about? That really, this irrigation problem, and this million-dollar problem with the irrigation?
I didn't hear.
This irrigation problem that we have, this...
Potential problem. It's not a problem right now.
I know, but it really made me nervous. It's going to cost a million dollars if it breaks and...
That's the complete redo of the irrigation system on Deer Run.
Okay, but if we spend this money, where will we have the money to fix it?
Yes.
We still have six and a half million dollars in the bank.
A half million?
Six and a half.
Six and a half million?
Correct.
Okay. But don't we only have really nine million, and we're going to be spending fourteen million in our budget?
No. No, no.
Why don't you let Omar? Why don't you tell us? Well, he's the financial guy.
The financial. Aren't we really spending fourteen...
The budget is fourteen million, but we can take in ten million dollars in reserves.
Okay, but isn't that kind of...
Well, our reserves only get to hit the chips for two million dollars. So, it's on our eight and a half million reserves, and if we did everything that's budgeted...
It's fourteen million.
...and then we have to do a book.
So, we're going over. We're going over our budget.
We're going over two and a half million if we do everything that's in this budget. Kitchen, the knives, Deer Run.
But we're going over. We don't want to go over.
Yes.
Isn't that correct?
I'm sorry, we're not going over our budget. I'm sorry. The fourteen million he quoted is all of our operations. It includes utilities, golf.
But we're only taking in nine. Right? Hello? Budget man? Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, that's a problem.
This year's budget is going to the reserves, correct?
Right. So, we don't want to do that. Right?
You budgeted going into the reserves, two and a half million dollars.
But we don't want to go in our reserves. Reserves are for emergencies, right?
Okay, as a banker...
Well, as a businesswoman...
Okay, but as a banker, this sounds kind of stupid, but money in the bank doesn't really help us.
But money's for emergencies. I don't want the Trump budget. I want the reserve budget for problems. Right? Is that how we run things? No?
Money in the bank is for emergencies and for capital spending.
Exactly.
Whereas capital spending.
Okay. Phew. Okay, so, we're going to go over. Okay. Thank you.
If we do everything, we would go over two and a half million dollars.
Good morning. Bill Norcross, resident. I'm sorry about missing out on some of this banter here, that I've been in back therapy, and I probably will have to go into a different type of therapy after this. So, anyhow, anyhow, you're going to, I'm a very progressive type of person. I understand when things have to be done, they have to be done. And I think the necessary improvements to the clubhouse is important. It's important business-wise, to attract people, and also be functional. And it's up to the panel here to spend the money. Now, we can go back here and ask everybody if they want a kitchen, and it would be fifty-fifty or sixty-forty. It's not, they're suggesting, I think, is to try to keep the cost down, and I can see the price has come down on the building or the, doing the kitchen, which is, which they initially started really, really high and scared everybody. And I tell you what, you know, when you allocate money for roads, and you're going to spend three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year on roads, nobody complains about it. I understand that. Should we spend more? Yes. But as long as we can try to keep the electric lights on, wow, did we pay that bill? So, anyhow, it's important, it's important that a project like this, whether it's modified a little bit more, but I think it's an important product. We had several, we had several events recently. We had two hundred and eighty odd people, very good, but it must have really strained the kitchen facilities. So, if we can fix that and keep the price down, I think people would be happier. But it's our responsibility to spend the money and vote on it. Thank you.
We're just doing the, we're just discussing kitchen now, not the lanai.
That's correct.
Bob Butts, resident. I just have one quick question. If you decide to do this, you have a number for building, the structural building of the facility. That's Marmor, correct?
Yes.
And then you have Kitchen Equipment Company that's supplying that?
That's correct.
Do you have in your contract someone to hook that kitchen equipment up?
Marmor.
Is that part, is it, that's in their contract? Sometimes those things slip through the cracks, just for, but you, they've got it?
Yep.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
If I hear myself back here, listening to this, that we're down to six million dollars in the bank, is that correct? After this year's budget?
We've never seen a budget. We've not checked that back in the bottom number. We have faced off three issues.
All right. So, at the minimum, let's say seven, okay? Gentlemen, when I was on the board, we were over ten. Now, we keep whittling away, whittling away at our reserves, and this million that we're talking about for the kitchen expansion is another whittle. We're carving another notch in that reserves. You know, most people, and most homeowners associations and communities that I've been in, always have had to have their reserves at the point of what their budget is, meaning if you're going to spend fourteen million dollars for a budget, and your income is fourteen million dollars, fine, but you should have fourteen million dollars in reserves in case you don't get fourteen million dollars in income. And we're not doing that. What we're doing is saying, "Well, we got all these projects we got to pay for, and we're only going to get this amount, but we'll take it out of the reserves. Let's quit taking money out of the reserves. Let's start building it back up." You know, there was two or three projects that could have been eliminated a long time ago, and when I was on the board, and Dave was on the board, and people wouldn't go along with it. "Oh, we might need that money to spend on something later." And that was the twenty-five-dollar assessment on our fire, because we turned it over to the county. Now, we're paying over, I don't know what it is at this year, seventy-five or something, to the county for the fire department, and that twenty-five dollars, nobody even remembers it. But we raised our assessments. Why did we have to raise our assessments? So, we can expand the kitchen? Or to replenish our reserves that we're depleting? Come on, guys, let's, you're a banker, some of you have been in business for yourself, you know that the best thing to do is to keep our reserves as high as possible and as close to what our budget is every year. Thank you.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
Supervisor Hottely?
No.
President Branson?
Yes.
Resolution number two zero one nine dash zero two slash twenty-two dash zero nine. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award the Lanai remodel portion of the RFP eighteen dash zero nine to Marmor Construction for two zero five seven sixty-four.
During the budget process, the supervisors... Excuse me?
Motion to approve.
Second.
During the budget process, the supervisors, we had a presentation from Clifford Schultz regarding the Lanai, and he brought forth different options to the board at that time. Option B was selected by the board for architectural drawings. Option B is located here on the easel for the Lanai. Just to review a little bit about the project, the entire Lanai will be under air with glass windows on the south end and on the west end of the building. And if you know anything about the restaurant, you can picture where the bar is currently located against the wall, so that wall, there still will be some columns, but the walls will be removed and will be enclosed under air conditioning. We are recommending Marmor Construction, as Supervisor Stiegel mentioned, for the amount of two hundred and five thousand seven sixty-five.
Forward discussion?
So, we're ninety-five thousand under budget on this piece.
Sorry. Five, oh, ninety-five thousand under budget. We, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for the construction.
So, we're forty-five thousand.
Yes, sir. Forty-five thousand.
Just to address a point that Mrs. Archer made, I don't know about all other golf courses having patios, but to have the patio we have and get it used as little as it's used, to me, is it a good use to use as square footage? And expanding that area so that we can separate the after-golf activity in the winter from the dining activity presents a very definite advantage for the club in terms of being able to seat and accommodate all the current business.
I just wanted to mention to everyone that I've asked for assurances. I don't know exactly if the other supervisors have, but I was worried about if we did this, that we would have more banquets and more closings. But I think, I think I've had enough assurances that this won't happen, and if it does, I hope this board reacts to it, if they do try to, to book more things, and, because we have to do something for the members, we have to do something for the residents. As part of this expansion, I'm told that we will have a full restaurant. Is that right, Cliff? Or it will be more like a restaurant than what it is now. I'm hoping that that will help, but my concerns right away were the way we rinse stuff out, and the members just seem to be kicked to the curb, and I'm very tired of that, and I hope that we address this soon, this board and what's been going on. And so, once again, I've been assured that this won't happen, but I hope that if it does happen, that I stand up and try to represent the members and the residents better to not be closed out. So, I hope that this happens, because that's what we were promised, at least I was promised.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I heard that. We want to have less banquets?
We want to be, we want to have less closings of the Lanai or something. If we've got to close the Lanai, we need to have a place to do it.
Really? Because I think we ought to have more now. We're spending a million dollars or nine hundred thousand dollars, we're giving them a first-class banquet facility in that kitchen, and now we're not going to use it?
Yeah, well, one...
Maybe we ought to reconsider.
One, no. One, no. One banquet is one membership, Ray.
Huh?
One banquet is one membership.
He's not saying that, Ray. What he's saying is that the members need to have a place to go, and closing the Lanai will give us an opportunity to have a full banquet and still have a place.
I thought he asked that we'd have less banquet?
No, that's not what he said.
Oh, so that, I misunderstood that.
It's all right.
More discussion?
Huh?
Any other discussion?
Oh, on Lanai? I don't understand why we're closing it, but that's, I mean, I thought it was a good idea at first, only because where the bar area is, it's very...
I wonder who's that is?
It's my wife telling me, keep my mouth shut. Excuse me, I apologize for that. No, I thought originally where the bar area is, it would be good to take that wall down, that part of the wall down and expand it, because you really can't get behind the bar, and it's a very, it's kind of an inconvenience, it's, it's a dead area. As far as opening up the rest, where I thought that, where I thought that was...
It was a good idea, I just changed my mind, especially when we started by closing some of it. And if there was thought of in closing any part of it, meetings and stuff like that, and what we're looking at is not what it's gonna be, so I don't know how anyone should be going on it. Since it's not, it's not an accurate portrayal of what people love for.
I guess that's where my concern is too. Again, it's unfortunate that the vote went the other way, because I think a workshop is what's needed to really air out what we want from the clubhouse, what we want to be able to provide from the clubhouse. I, I understand the concept of enclosing the Lanai so it's more usable, but I also know there's been discussions that we, in addition to what we put out to bid, that we're looking for some type of way to close off the Lanai from the dining rooms for private meetings, and I don't think that's in the bid, so I don't know what that's gonna cost, because it's not in the bid. So, you know, I, I would like more information, and of some final workshops to figure out what it is we really are trying to accomplish for the clubhouse.
That's not a very important take now, is it? You're just taking part of it out.
Will we call them what it is?
What about the furnishing costs of furnishing that? There's quite a bit of more furniture seating out there, what's the cost of that?
It's gotta be a little above what the furniture costs is.
We have $30,000 that we're gonna allocate to new furniture this year, but we, Cliff, do we have a budget, we have some money allocated for the next year too, so it's a two-phase for furniture. So total...
Total, wow.
Well, the, the initial, the initial phase is, is what we're using at this...
My, my...
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars, we're gonna cut all the furniture, you know, put it in there, you blow the wall out, and open it, close it in. Okay.
Well, there's a phase two to that, please. Phase two.
I thought you probably was.
Yeah, so in talking internally, the condition levels of the tables, the base of the tables are in good condition, we should be able to reuse some of the base spaces and tabletops that we replaced.
She's talking about the, the current in the restaurant, it needs to be replaced.
The condition level of the chairs are not great, so we do have money for replacements.
Okay, so if that doesn't matter, that's not the Lanai, that's the restaurant, that exists.
The Lanai furniture is deteriorated to the point that we won't be able to reuse the Lanai furniture, and it's aluminum anyway, so it's made for outdoors, but it's deteriorated to the point that we can't use Lanai furniture at all, it's on the porch right now.
So, that's not going, some, you're gonna sell that totally or whatever, it's not gonna be over $30,000 for the furniture that's going. Thank you.
President, again. The expansion is a nice idea, but my problem with it is it's a bait-and-switch deal, right? You expand the Lanai, so you create more seating, so that you can justify the restaurant expansion. In other words, you create more seating area for people to come in. And I do not believe that Billy Casper, our son-in-law, is not going to expand into that area with banquets. There'll come a reason, trust me. There will come a time when they say, oh, we got too many people, we have to re-expand. So, that's it, thank you.
Just to address, and I think you're gonna get an extreme negative reaction from at least one person on this board if that happened. And I'm pretty sure Billy Casper isn't that. Tell me about Billy Casper, I don't know, Cliff, he's on the...
Lawn rook, you're not?
Um, is there any way we can designate that as a members lounge only? Members and guests?
We, we can't, we can make it, we can try to make it, but we can't say that because it's, what?
Well, you, we can tell the people who run the kitchen that's what it's for.
But we can't find, to answer your question, we cannot do that.
Okay, but is there any way we can make it, make that into a sports lounge?
Well, I, I think, now, correct me if I'm wrong, the area behind the bar, there's gonna be 100 PTVs and facing...
West.
At least against that wall, not the wall, we can look at the light.
Yeah.
There'd be a big, at least one big one there, and that's what I'm...
My fear is that the diners are gonna come in there and say, no, we wanna sit on the outside, so we got a view, and we're gonna be a push out of there.
I, I agree, that's one of my concerns too.
Hopefully that won't happen.
And I'm another one who will be very upset if, if it's strictly used, then members can't move.
The reality is, if we designate the ballroom area or buildings, the government will gravitate to that, and we won't see all the current guests there unless they ask us, because they come in and say, we'd like to sit out there, we're probably gonna accommodate it.
Charlie Shields again. From a legal standpoint, can you address the issue of why we can't say, "club members only"? Because I, I don't think the statement that you can do, can't do that is true. I'm pretty sure we had a club in Connecticut where that is exactly what happened.
Yeah, we're, I mean, I can research that, but we're governmental entity, quasi-governmental entity, so.
Gustavo Ibanez, resident. We're gonna make it a members-only, and all residents are gonna pay for it. If I'm paying for it, I wanna be there too. I own many properties here in Sonna Lake, I pay all my assessments, and members only? Then how do the members pay for it? Thank you.
Further comment?
This gentleman here just got up before, are you a member of the club?
No, sir.
Okay, fine, that's all I wanna know. I am too. It's my turn. Okay, I think one of the problems we have at the, in, in the bar area, and I think we have to really address that, because I think Cliff has tried, we, has got good ideas, but we run a couple of shotguns, we have 144, maybe 150 people coming in, and it's a very congested, very time-consuming type of deal to get a beverage at the bar, and it's very, very frustrating, and it chases business away. So I hope that area is gonna be examined so that it, it's really functional, and so that you have enough people behind the bar to service everybody, and maybe use two sides, whatever. But I think the idea of having a, a members' area, at least, and you know, we have, we have about 80 people come in at one time, what are you gonna do with them? You know what I mean? You gotta use a little public sense.
Bill, hey, Bill, take your time and...
But you have to, you have to think about, you know, taking care of large groups, and that's what we, Charlie Shields was talking about. Thank you.
But Sonna Lake is a residence situation, not members. We don't discriminate against the residents in favor of the members. Every, most members are residents, but it's not an exclusive situation, and we don't really want it to be. Further public comment?
I hate to come up here twice on one issue, I know it's not allowed, but anyway.
Well, it's happened, so go ahead. Nobody's triple-dipping, though.
Yeah, hopefully this restaurant won't be, I hope we do something about the abbreviated schedule, ours, somebody had mentioned something, we're closed at 7:30, you go down, and everybody's packed. That needs to change if you're gonna get, if you're gonna increase your revenue, at least try to. Also, the, I'm losing my train of thought, the, I thought Billy Casper had an, had a restaurant efficiency or banquet efficiency expert working for him. Ron Wunderling told me that one time. And back to what Bill was saying, maybe we, if they do, maybe we can get that guy in here to see if we can't improve our productivity and our efficiency in our restaurant, so that we can serve more people quicker and make everybody feel a little bit better. Is that the case? Do you, have you heard about this? You might talk to Ron Wunderling and see. Casper's supposed to have an expert that worked for this TV show, restaurant or bar efficiency guy. Why can't we get him in here and have him take a look at this thing and see if we can't fix some of these problems? Well, you need to talk to Ron about it. Thank you.
We had somebody here a couple years ago.
Really?
Casper, yeah. He recommended $550,000 worth of equipment.
Well, I know, I don't know if it's the same guy.
Exactly.
I wasn't talking about, we're not talking about Green, Greenfield and something, I was talking about efficiency.
This was, this was their restaurant guy who came.
Oh, really?
Yeah, seriously.
Don't, don't ask him back.
I would agree.
Further comment? Christie?
Before we vote, I just want, are we voting for that as exactly as it is, or with modifications, or what? Since there's been conversations about modifying it, what are we doing?
Option B is what's been designed by architecture, our, architecture consultant, Michael Griffith. So this is what we're voting on right there, yes.
We're only voting for what I see there.
Yes, sir.
No modifications at all, no changes.
Structurally, there's no changes, I, I mean...
No doors, no closures, as it is. I'm just asking.
That's what, that's what we're voting on, option B, yes, sir.
That's what we're voting on.
Yes, sir.
And just for further clarification, I, my understanding is this concept came up after, and was not part of the 2018 workshop, and we haven't really had public comment on this, other than what we had heard today.
The Lanai construction was approved during the budget process. We had one or two public hearings on the, the budget itself, but specifically, there's no workshop has been conducted on the Lanai.
Okay, Christie?
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
Supervisor Hotelling?
No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
Okay, discussion on popular seat voting.
All right, I guess I'll start this up. We, there has been requests of the, there'd be some modifications to the way that popular seats are filled with vacancies. So you'll see there that the, I've added, I looked at the, the methods that were used by City of Sebring, Lake Placid, and Avon Park, and have used some of their language, so that we would be appointing the board, the state requirement is that the seat be filled within 45 days. And currently, our, the ordinance mimics the state statute. So what we would be adding would be making ours a little bit more restrictive, and we would say that once, the proposed language is saying that the appointee is gonna serve until the next general election, and at that general election, the, there would be a vote, and whoever is voted in will, will sit in for the remainder of that term, that would have the, the vacancy, that vacancy term. That way, because we have staggered seating, and that way this, you know, our staggered seating doesn't get altered. So, happy to answer any questions.
Um, does there need to be some things in there to accommodate the general election process? We appointed Neil for two weeks. Essentially. How long does it take to become a candidate in the general election?
Well, I think as far as the, we, we all know when the general elections are going to occur, you know, so those are, those are basically calendared, but the, I think the one of the reasons that we, it's, it's created that way is so that we, you know, there's already gonna be an election having, you know, being held here, and we just have a separate, don't we just have like a separate area when we do voting, or is it on the official ballot? Okay, so it's on the official ballot. So, yeah, we'll have to check with the supervisor elections and find out what their lead time is, but I think as far as our, you know, our time...
I mean, it may be 90 days or something, I don't know. So you may wanna include that in your change, is my point.
Okay.
I, I think the, for clarification, I was appointed for two weeks, and that would've been the norm even under the change. The difference would be that following that two weeks, I was reappointed for four years, and I would only be reappointed until the next general election in that case, which would be a two-year term. The one thing I didn't understand on the language, and I see that it's picked up from Sebring, what does the "and qualified"? The language seems odd there. Can you clarify why it says "and qualified" afterwards, or...
Yeah, because there's a, the, our ordinance has a qualification process, in order to even be able to sit in the, in a, in a popular elected seat, there are certain qualifications you have to meet. And so, I know, one of them is being, I think, a resident, and a registered voter here in, you know, in, in, in our area, and so, like, our Canadian residents can't sit on the, on the seats because they're, you know, they're, they're not voting here.
But don't you have to be qualified before you can get on the election?
Yes, yeah.
So this is saying, after they're elected and qualified?
No, you have to be qualified. No, that's a, you're a, you have to be, okay, I guess I could reverse that wording.
Yeah, I just, it just, I'm, I'm reading that as plain, it doesn't make sense.
There was discussion as to whether or not we should do this as well on the landowner seats, is that possible, or...
Well, the, the landowner section, landowner vacancies are actually dealt with differently. That's a, that's a separate section in the ordinance. The popular elected seats are controlled by 9-107 subsection D, but for vacancies of landowners, that's controlled by 9-107 subsection B, and that basically says if there's a vacancy of any supervisor elected by the landowners, the remaining supervisors may fill such vacancy until the sooner occurrence of, and it's number one, the next annual meeting of the landowners, when a, wherein a successor to such appointee shall be elected by the landowners, or the landowners would choose to have, set up a special meeting. So, the landowner's seat is vacated at the next, the next annual meeting of landowners and elections help.
Okay, so that's already dealt with, we don't need to deal with that, we just need to deal with the popular, okay? This is just for discussion, so...
But there's no 45-day requirement on the landowner's seat?
Correct.
Let's discuss here.
Further discussion?
I'm in favor. I, I think it's, I've been here three years on the board, and we've got, we got a lot of people, and I, I would just assume the people out there vote, we can appoint for a little while, but we've had appointments for three and a half years, or three and four, and, and that's kinda tough on us, is, that's not what our job is supposed to be, I don't think. I'm in favor of it.
Further discussion?
I'm, I'm in favor of it as well, and I'm, I guess the, the question is, how do we get this worked into a resolution that we can approve and send to the county?
We can, we can get something prepared, I'll make a few little changes, and we can bring it back relatively quickly, but that, you're all right, it does have to go before the county commissioners, as the change in the ordinance.
I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor. Let's do it.
Bye.
Just discussion.
I know it's just a discussion, but did I understand it correctly that the landowners' election only is good until the next election? Is that what you said?
Next landowner election, yes.
Correct. If a landowner's seat is vacated, there's an appointment is made, and there's the next land... Annual landowners' meeting, there's a vote to fill the remainder of the vacant term.
Okay, so we have two people on the board right now that didn't go under those circumstances?
Yes, I did. I was appointed for like 90 days and then the next landowners' election, I was elected.
All right. But we have one that just happened, right? The land...
That's a public seat.
That's a public seat.
A popular elected seat.
No, no. The landowners in January. Didn't we just have one?
Dan ran on opposed.
Huh?
I ran on opposed.
Well, there was no landowner's seat open in January. Michael's elected.
Well, that wasn't very publicized because nobody knew that this is the case. And if that would've been the case, there would've been other people that would've run for that position.
We're not making any change to that. That's the way that's been written.
There was no seat open in January. I was elected in 2018 January.
Yes, okay.
There was nobody in 2019 that I know of. You were elected, what, 2019?
Just so you know, Rick, I'm a landowner and I'm up for election in January.
This coming January?
Next January.
Okay.
I'm up for election.
It just seems like we missed the cycle here. Because it wasn't... Because I've been to two landowner meetings, and in both of them, there was nobody that was supposedly being nominated.
There's only two seats for a four-year term. You're gonna have that.
I was elected in 2018, so that... Maybe you missed that one. I was appointed in 2017 for 90 days, 120 days, and then I was elected in January of 2018.
Okay, so this last January, who was up?
Nobody. There was no seat open.
Mark Camp was elected in November, and that's...
Mark Camp.
Mark Camp was the one...
But it wasn't a landowner.
But he wasn't a landowner, he was a popular...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, are we done? All right, Rhodes.
Yes. We have a memo here from Polston Engineering. Our roadway evaluations for select roadways in the district were performed to provide a method of determining which roads would be paved for this fiscal year. We utilized a rating system provided by the county engineering department and modified it to suit the improvement districts' needs. The key evaluation criteria remained, but the method of calculating the road rating equation was altered. So I'll let Drew and Mike present what they found here on the evaluations and to present the roads that we'll be paving for the next... For this fiscal year.
Drew and I have worked on it with George also, and we came up with a list that we wanna put out to bid. So Drew, you can go ahead.
Okay. On your little board packets with the list of roads, we did... I included the evaluation sheet on like the summary of all the roads that we evaluated that day. This was our shortlist on the roads that were... At least we were unconsidering for either paving or milling and paving. George and myself went around to these roads and evaluated each one of them for all the different like cracking or structure failure, the edge cracking. There's a bunch of different evaluation criteria. After we rated them, we created a list kinda conforming to what we had for budget and our estimates for this year. It should be page three in the little packet. Basically, we took the worst rated roads that we knew were heavily or moderately traveled. So we weren't trying to grab anything out back that was falling apart that no houses were on. We tried to make sure we were on a least populated area. Our first road was Biltmore Drive. That's next to the hotel off of Frontage. We picked Woods and Irons because it's heavily trafficked and it has some excessive cracks and it's... The traffic count was fairly high on that road, too. Arduna Drive back here in Unit 5, it's got more structural issues than probably most of the other roads. We're considering doing a rebuild of that road. I don't know if you've been down it in a while, but it's got some heavy bumps and the edges are cracking, and we have three culverts that are gonna need to be repaired or replaced. The road's actually has some fairly good dips in it. Of course, it's a decently populated area, too. It's a main road going in and out of Unit 5. We have Pebble Beach Drive East. It's between the intersection of Woods and Irons and Pink. We evaluated the entire road, but between those two intersections was the worst part of the road, so we'll have it higher on the priority list to try to get done this year. And also Myrtle Beach Drive between Woods and Sanchez. It's also the worst part. I believe it's one of the older parts of Myrtle Beach. I think it was installed prior... Probably one of the first segments installed. And that kinda gets us close to our budget total. But we also included... We included another section of Myrtle in the other end of Pebble. If our... If either bids or however we get pricing to do it, whatever contractor we decide on, if we're way under budget, we'd like to consider these other two roads if we have budget monies. But if not, we won't address them this year.
I got two questions.
Okay.
How many miles have we got totally about in Stone Lake?
Total roads?
Yeah.
I believe it was close to 80 miles or...
And this is like three and a half miles.
Yeah, what we have contingent right now is like 1.75 plus the other... Yeah, once you add that in, we're closer to three.
Oh, this is 1.7 miles.
Yeah, are you on the first?
I'm looking up.
Okay, you're on the page two that has all the roads that we evaluated?
Yeah, 1.7 miles, 347,000, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have years and years to go of catching up and fixing roads.
Yeah, as we need. There's some... There's quite a few miles of road out back that we're not gonna... That's not gonna be on our priority list for a long time unless we get some... A developer come in and buy everything up, but...
That's fine. When you do these and you fix them, how long should they last?
It depends on the condition of the road and what we repair. Our goal is a minimum of 20 years before we have to repave it again. So like on Arduna, we don't wanna just overlay it because it has some structural issues. We wanna do a rebuild on it. The cost is higher, but it'll last the full 20 to 25 years once we do that. So if we just overlay it, it might only last 10 years.
So I guess for budget purposes, this is a vicious cycle that'll never stop?
Correct. It's... Roads are a maintenance issue.
So we need to allocate probably 350,000 a year for the next...
When we can.
As long as we're here.
Yeah, when we can. We don't like... If we had a budget crisis and we only had half of that that we could spend on it, we would only do the roads that were in need, like absolute need. We wouldn't try to do... Some of this is kinda preventive maintenance. You let a road get too bad, it just gets worse and worse, and then the simple overlay won't be a Band-Aid for it for 20 years. Then you have to...
Just one last question. Is 350 a good number, or would you come and say next year, maybe it should be 400?
I think our roads that need rebuild are not as high. This year, we're doing a rebuild on Arduna, but there's not as many that need that much work. I think we... When we did the calculations for this past budget, we were good for the 350. I think we were like our minimum, we were going down to like 300. But I think we ended up meeting in the middle because we kinda had a range on our estimate.
So that's a good number. You think we could accomplish what we need to accomplish with that money?
On average, yes. I think we can get a lot done for that.
Thank you.
I guess the real issue is that we're looking at putting 200,000 or 195 on one section of road this year. If you don't have many more that need the full rebuild...
Correct.
Then we can get a lot further with the same amount of money.
Correct. And if we... Some years, we'll have to do like a mill and pave versus just overlay, and that's gonna add another 50% to the road, something like that. So it'll just... It'll vary some.
Right. What we wanna do is try to start improving all the roads and start paying... And do two or three miles every year to catch up. You know, David let go for too long, and that's why we're trying to catch up. And that's why... That's why when you guys asked for a list a few months ago, we came up with the list of what we wanna do, you know? Thank you.
There's some stuff out back that has some pretty serious potholes. I assume you can just fill those if they don't have any traffic, but we should... Still should probably fill the potholes.
Right. We actually do go out there and do patching out there because we do have people ride bikes, do running. We just had a road race. Ariel worked on a road race and she gave me a list and went out there and cleaned all that up. So we do. And there are some culverts also that we have to address. So there are times we have to put money where people maybe don't think we have to, but we do have to keep the roads up.
Right.
In the initial discussions we had, I asked for data on Myrtle Beach and Pebble Beach relative to the initial thickness of the paving and what was there now. How much deterioration have we actually seen? Because I still don't drive down those streets and see what I see on Arduna.
Are you talking about the damage versus Arduna?
I don't know how you measure deterioration.
In our criteria, with some of the... If you go into some of the roadway evaluation, the assessment forms in the back, it has... I believe it's the seven different areas that we look at that was from the basis of the county's evaluation. We look for the different types of cracking, what the edge of the pavement's doing, like if it's breaking up and you're seeing more shell or like your interface between your driveways, if something's breaking real bad on the edges. That's in consideration. Potholes, that's a fairly big one. Ravelling, which is if your aggregates coming up, which I know a lot of you see the microsurface, you're starting to see the road underneath it because it's all the little aggregates coming up with it. To me, that's not as big a concern with the microsurface. I know we wanna address all those because it's basically wearing away, but that is a consideration on... If you drove down Orion, which goes to the middle school, you could see what they call ravelling down there. You'd actually have the aggregate just ripping away from the asphalt. That's one of the big criteria we do. Structural adequacy, a lot of that comes to do with between alligator cracking. That's when you have a bunch of little small chunks of cracks together. Usually, you'll see that when the structural base is failing or starting to fail. We'll have like dips in the road or you'll have ruts where your tires travel. That's usually a big concern, which we have some of that on Arduna. The biggest stuff on Myrtle and Pebble is the edge cracking and the longitudinal block cracking. There is some alligator cracking on it, too, but that's the bigger concerns that we're trying to address on those roads.
So the plan is to overlay both of those and not to rebuild?
Correct.
And to clarify, you indicated that the goal was that this work would last 20 years, which is why you're doing the rebuild on Ardona.
Correct.
And overlay might only last 10. So on these overlays...
Well, generally, your overlay, if you had... Say you had Arduna and you had structural issues and you overlaid it, that's when you'd only get the 10. Generally, your overlay will still last close to 20 years, as long as your road doesn't get that bad. That's what we're trying to prevent. If you keep up with it, your road doesn't deteriorate as much, so when you overlay it, you can stretch it out a little more than where if you had a destroyed road and you just went and overlaid it, you're not... It's not gonna last.
Okay. And then my other question is on the optional alternate routes, which are kind of extensions of the work that you're doing.
Correct.
Are you gonna have those bid both with a small section and the extension? Because there may be some savings in...
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna put those as bid alter. If we put it out to bid or if we find we have a contract we can piggyback off of, just depending on whatever we determine is the better solution when we got to do it. But they will be included on it, and that way, if it's over budget, we can just nick some and put them to the next year or the next budget year we decide to.
That was just for discussion, right, Susan? I need to take action. Thank you, Drew.
So what happens now? Do we put it out for bid or what do we do?
It's going.
We've discussed it. What's next?
We are gonna draw up the bid specifications, but we are not sure at this time, are we gonna put this out for bid or we have an option of a piggyback on another government. So we're looking into that right now. So what that means is that we have another government who just put this out for bid here in this county. So with those bid results, we have an option as a board to piggyback off those same numbers, or we can go through the whole process of bid, which will take a couple months.
And we'll decide that when?
We're gonna look at the... I don't know if the bids are in yet for the city. They are?
City of Sebring's bid just came due last week.
Okay.
So the city council approved their bid, so the next two weeks, Drew and I will review that bid and look over the pricing and see if that's our best interest. We only had one bidder, so we'll see and determine whether we wanna use that or go out to bid ourselves.
So we'll know by... What is this? This is February. We'll know by the end of March?
Yeah, for sure.
So just to clarify, Sebring only had one bidder?
Correct.
Is there any...
And they did a full infrastructure RFP, so it included probably... Those were roughly 30 different line items that this vendor quoted for them at square foot pricing.
And the assumption would be that our projects are smaller than theirs, so we might get more bidders, or are we likely to get anything more than they got?
A lot of this...
They got one bidder.
Yeah, a lot of this RFP is kinda specialized. So road paving, there's only one company in, I think, the whole county that does. There's two in the county that perform these types of services. So the chances of us going out and finding those two, we're probably gonna get the same result, so we're gonna really highly consider piggybacking off that contract.
Go, Ivaness, resident. I see the streets that the gentleman said they were... Or had damage. One of the most busiest streets here is Stone Lake and Granada, if I'm not mistaken. Well, at the 5700 and Granada Boulevard, we had last year a sewer problem. They were capped and they never removed the cap, so you guys came with an excavator and opened a big hole in the street. You guys what? Those holes are sinking. One in front of my house and one next to my house on the patches we made. Are those gonna be repaired? Well, that's sinking, and we take that road every day. That's the way to get Tortiga. Right before Tortiga, right before the stop sign, a hundred yards prior, the stop sign. I don't see that road on the list. And that's one of the heaviest congested roads here in Stone Lake. I don't see it on the list. I will ask everybody to drive by and see how it's sinking. The patches we made, you guys made. Thank you.
I would assume that's just a patch. Is that what he's talking about?
Thank you.
We'll look into that.
Okay. All right.
Granada what?
I know 5700, it's streets more or less, you know where it is. And Granada Boulevard. The huge one is sinking, and right in front of me has another one sinking. Under repairs.
Add on item? Petitions and communications?
Yes, we have two. Yes, we have, um, two, we have one from Mr. Ivannes and the other from Mr. Halbick and my apologies to Mr. Halbick on, uh, not seeing his, his statement at the end of the email. He wanted it, you wanted your, um, your information to be part of the communication to the board. I apologize for the public meeting, but that is, if there's any other comments you have on that, um, you're welcome.
I was going to get up and read it, but it's pretty heartwarming to see all these public comments and the discussion on this kitchen thing for you guys and the board. I know the guys at the board don't probably like all the public comment we're getting, but I think it's really heartwarming. I'm glad to see all these people here, I'm glad to see they're, uh, you know, making comments and, uh, and so I do have, I do have some problems the way, uh, the way some of these things were asked for and, uh, you know, the, uh, the board saw it, you saw it, David Schumacher saw it, so, uh, anyway, uh, that's, uh, that's fine. I accept your apology. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
And the other?
Mr. Ivannes?
It's not public comment yet, Bill.
Okay, there's a communication, my name is Goss Ivannes again, I'm a member builder here in Sebring, in Stone Lakes. From where I heard last, a couple meetings ago, we are building an average of 25 houses per year in Stone Lake. Well, I got news for you guys, I built 20% of them or in the process of building, 20% of them. And September last year, Board of Commissioners auctioned four lots on Granada after Cortez. Those lot have road, no water. I personally came to Mr. Jose Jesus, AKA Omar, and asked him, Omar, I will buy those four lots from Board of Commissioners if you bring water to my lots. He said, yes. He even attested that right in front of Mike's service office the other day. They did tell me there wasn't going to be water to my lots. When I went for water, because we already started building and permitting one of the houses, four houses we're going to build. First they said you got to pay $20,000 to get water there. $20,000. From the last point of water to my lots is 550 feet. I went to Sebring Utilities, we get water, I'm doing another five houses, as we speak right now, outside of Stone Lakes. I spoke to a lady named Kathy, with Mr. Jesus spoke to her too. City of Sebring, of Sebring Utilities charges for a two-inch pipe, that's all in it for my four houses, $8 a foot. Plus, they call it the under table, put the pipe under the road, $500. I just paid that on one of my construction sites on Cooper. Well, the last offer I got from you guys for $20,000 came to $10,000. And we're four lots one building plus I have two houses right across the street from me that are willing to join. If, now if we decided to go ahead and pay what Sebring Utilities asked, I'm not asking, you guys are wasting a million dollars of my money on a hotel, our money. That you guys are not willing to invest in infrastructure, water on down the road on Cortez to build and bring more money and bring more people? To a guy that already built, was building 20% of the houses been built here in Stone Lake? Where you guys are going to get all your money, pull it, return and more within two years? If we pay, if I pay or bring my own water, I got my licensed plumber and my licensed contractor. My licenses do allow me to do underground work. Why? The last quote they had was $10,700 when the Sebring, uh, Utilities would do it for $5,000. I wonder why? Is there anybody making money under the table here? Because as far as I investigated, we need to have an ethics committee because some employees here spend over a hundred thousand dollars in one year in real estate. Do you homework? I have not. So where's that all that money coming from? A job that city would do for $5,000, they want me to pay $10,000 and upfront for one lot that I'm starting to build? Why instead of investing a million dollars on a kitchen that's going to cost me more money every year to maintain? The only building expanding our utilities, our infrastructure, not just for me. As Mike said to me, I said, I bring my own client, I forget everybody else, I get my two-inch pipe, I get water to my four lots. Oh, we need to, you have to think of everybody else, it's bringing water to the whole block, they built a hydrant, what should I pay for? Why doesn't the district invest on infrastructure and make those water lines over there? You want to bring people to the district? Where, if you're only building 25 houses a year, that means we only bringing 25 families a year. Is that enough to maintain this, all the expenses? All the over budget, all, all the budget that we have on our incomes? We need income. Who brings the income? The assessments. Who pays the assessments? The houses. Who building only 25 houses a year? I can give you 4218 La Mancha I built, 5721 Granada I built, 5723 Granada, 5936 Granada and now 3122 Granada. And I'm the contractor for four of the houses right on Granada, duplexes being built. You guys were spending money trying to get investors here. Remember that lunch we paid for all the real estate people? Have they brought any investors? I don't think so. Now, I was told that Hornets allowed to build their own water lines. One lane allowed to build my own then. I'm not asking you guys for money, I'm asking you guys to consider making this place better, bringing more residents and invest them on in the right place. $10,000 supposed to bring that line. Now we don't have the money to do it, now we have a million dollars to spend in a kitchen? Huh? $10,000, we're going to give water to two houses already built, that means I got their names and spoke to them, Mr. Diaz, what's his name, Miguel Valencia, which Mr. Jesus spoke to him. He tried to contact back Mr. Jesus three times and never answered back his call. He came to see him at the office, he was too busy to see. Six people are going to use that water. We're going to pay the $1,600 impact fee, multiply, that's already the $10,000. That's the revenue those houses are going to bring when we finish on assessments. Is that fair that they wanted me to pay upfront all $10,000 to bring that line or $12,000 that they brought me the last paper two days ago? Is that fair? Thank you.
Let me make a comment, comment about that, I, I couldn't really understand what the gentleman was saying. But, but there's not hardly anybody in this room that hasn't paid for some sort of infrastructure improvement by, by either a phase five bond or fifth third note or something. If he's talking about extending the water line and whoever, whoever those people are involved and, and get, get that benefit, they have to pay. That's the way it is. I'm sorry. You know, you just don't do it for nothing and I don't know if that's what he's saying because I couldn't understand him because he was loud and I just couldn't understand him, but, but that's the way it works. Uh, am I right or am I wrong?
No, you're correct, we treat everybody equally.
Thank you.
Let me clarify.
Staff.
I'm sorry, let me clarify this. No, no, everybody speak two times, why couldn't I? Couldn't I?
Fine, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm not asking for the district to pay anything for me. I'm willing to pay what everybody else pays, not 10, not three times what everybody else pays. That's in $10,000. If you read the prices, if it's non-bond lots, it's $3700 per lot. If I bring my own water, it's 1,600. I'm not asking for the district to give me anything for you to do any of that. I want to be treated as Hornets is treated, that's only benefit from that relation. But because I'm paying anybody under the table, I can get what I need at the right price, the price you set it.
Speak into the microphone if we have to.
Because I don't pay somebody here under the table. I don't do special favors, really? How could an employer here could spend over a hundred thousand dollars on real estate investigating that?
Can I ask a question?
Mike.
Really?
Hey, 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 timeout, timeout, everybody. Timeout.
It is. He had, we had a verbal contract, which I'm doing the.
Mike, Mike, stop it. And you, you stop making accusations. You want to speak, you can speak. You're done.
I have a question. Is this covered by an ordinance? A policy, a procedure?
No, so based on our research, like I said, we did call City of Lake Classic, it's called City of Sebring, it's a case by case basis, so we've gone out the quotes, we got post-it engineering involved to get an eight-inch line, which is what they're requiring, we also got a two-inch quote, which is what Mr. Ivannes needs. We were only passing along the cost of the two-inch line and we offered him the lower permit fees. So, once again, we're, we did consult with every other entity, City of Sebring is a little bit different because their staff, they have enough staff that they actually put in the lines and do all the work. We do not fall in that situation, so it causes an extra cost here at the district, but once again, we, we try to accommodate, we try to make it as fair. We went back to the table two or three times with Mr. Ivannes, we just weren't able to come to a resolution.
We thought, we thought we could do a minimum like you thought.
No, that, well, once again, they poured it out, the two-inch line, four side, line for.
Okay, thank you. They, they put a French line down, so fly white, with my four sixty-nine hundred buildings and the homes outside of the state, just to finish, I go out a verbal contract with Mr. Jesus, where Mr. Back, he's a witness, he wants to get, promised him water.
But he never said, you know, he never said.
Just for the, just for the record, the, the proposal made by Mr. Ivannes, the total project cost is $28,000. The proposal for him was only $12,000. That means his district is invested $16,000 into this project if he would agree, given the facts that there's two other companies. So, we are trying to make a proposition, we are trying to invest in community, we are, from the business standpoint, making an investment in that contribution.
Are there any other future lots that are along the route for the benefit?
There's, to the extension that we proposed, it's six lots down each side of the river. Mr. Ivannes owns four, there's two houses already built. The other homes have been, the other properties have been vacant for a very long time, um, they're probably going through the stream and process to the county. One of those will be developed. Once again, the district has hundreds of lots with both infrastructure, uh, water and sewer searches, so our expect, our expectation is developers coming aren't going to go for those lots, they're going to go for those that have both water and sewer already available to you. We're just talking about the other one.
Staff report.
So I want to give you guys a quick update, it's been a while since we talked about FEMA and where to change. At the last conversation, we had received about $135,000 from FEMA for the, we had expected $340,000 to get back, we only received $135,000. In the last two weeks, we've gotten three more projects past due to pipeline, so we've got all agreed and one of the store market rates, so that's about $150,000 that have now launched this date, have been all paid. We've signed the new contract and sent that in for submission, so we should have received about $180,000 here in the next, hopefully a month or so. Usually we get to say obligations pretty much done deal. We only have one project left, um, to go through, we're going to be fully reimbursed through the process. It's about $40,000 that contains our Peter Redd, so we're almost at the finish line with all the, um, expenses. Out of the $150,000 that's coming through the pipeline, $30,000 of that roughly, give or take, is allocated to the golf staff for overtime, uh, all the course work that they did, we get the courses back up and running after their game, so, which is a good news, we're almost done with this whole FEMA review.
I'm sorry, I just, but, but Mr., I hope I can ask Ivannes, I don't believe it, oh, we did, or just.
I guess right now at our point, once again, we've given him a proposal, which feels fair, the board wants to try and make a change to that, but our proposal is still in line and we want to accept that proposal, we want to talk to him and still be with him, maybe I was going to change it.
I mean, it's probably dumb idea, maybe we should have a meeting in the district office and a board member, speak to guys for hash it out?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with any.
Peaceful matter?
This is hard, you all, you're going to do that? I think he's all going to do that.
I don't have a problem with it. If he's mad at it, it's standing in the middle of the night, which is what we do.
I, all I want to say is I, I just want to say I'm what they done, uh, we don't want to make any special, so, whether you need them or not, I mean, it's, we have, we have how we do stuff here. And I don't think we do anything for Mr. Martin, so the person that just walked 47 lots, they're not going to get any special treatment from, from us, so. We get anything. You know, I could be against anything, anybody, anything special, but what we're now.
The only thing, we have, we have an issue, and it's material, Sebring, so, it is what it is. We won't do that.
Yeah, I think all that, if you want to have a meeting with him, I'll see if I can explain to him.
All right. Thank you.
Good one. Uh, January 1st is our, our done, finished a couple days ago, so, um, as you kind of realize, planning on opening a restaurant last time, this is never really, um, we've been blessed with a little weather in January and, and, uh, we're actually, uh, $83,000 involved on the other ones last year, so really, really strong. We're just going to do, do the Valentine's event over $300, of the Valentine's event over $300, the Valentine's event, it's based here, uh, sweetheart open, it's always a chip, folks. Um, again, the biggest we've ever had, so not fair to good weather, kind of, other places as well, all the groups are kind of growing and, uh, we're kind of what I reported last year, we're just busy and trying to work through it. Federal projections are, are really quite good as well, again, we kind of invested good weather, just working through this new business. Uh, right now we're trending $20,000 dollars-ish above last year's sales in, in Denver, so really all good news, and even keeping some of the marshes, I don't know, uh, really that's fine for you, just, just, just keeping your head above water. Membership directly is finished, it's just not, I'll have that out in the new weather that we just kind of got finished yesterday, so if you'd like to come out, but, but, but there's, there's.
The membership's down $50,000, is the question, right?
Yes.
And we still have, are we notified the, uh, membership that's in additional degrees yet? Like you said, you were?
The greens?
Uh, families, I'm sorry.
No, I haven't, I'm, I'm just going to have a specific communication.
And we're still going to.
My, 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 it's a really, when, when this glass, you know, bellways, is that, they're never doing anything about some places, so, so, I mean, we have a few little thin areas on Pearl, you know, Taman and Eleven, but really on the whole, the bellways are in pretty good condition, so.
You think bellways are good condition?
Yeah.
But they don't think certainly are bad. I, I, the reason, one other thing I'd like you to do for us, since we got, correct, I've given you a quote to give you a night in the kitchen, and I don't think the boy can help with illusion, I don't like to know what casters and technicians are, are marking the kitchen, what they want the kitchen to stand for, and what you guys want to represent. If you're going to the tight weight, you're not going to the tight weight, you're going to serve pizza and you're not going to serve tapas. So that at least maybe we can agree on it, or agree with you.
Well, I, I certainly like the boy, so that's, but.
No, we can, so I, so you're going to have to do a work.
I'm going to request a workshop with Billy Casser, so. It's done right enough, we put it in order, but I think we'd like to have it. The workshop with Billy Casser, uh, talked about a lot of things, raised a lot of, just we're going, and so, and how the majority of the supervisors want it, so I think that needs to be heard by them. I don't think you can.
I think, I think we're all going to be here.
Do I have to just ask you, you're in the head or, 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 I think we all just, I guess the question, you're trying to get it, you know, starting to agree with.
I can make all that, on my end, is there any other comments about Billy Casser meeting? Mr. Huntley, I don't think he's taking you to a meeting, so. There are any other comments about Billy Casser meeting?
I'm sorry?
Is there any other suggestions or comments about a future Billy Casser meeting?
Well, I just love you. I think we should, I agree with you. We haven't seen him in what, a year and a half, two years?
The last special meeting, I believe, was the November of 2017, that we had with the corporate.
I, I agree with you.
Because the agenda of what we're discussing, discussing Casser, which we have a board discussion about the Casser meeting before we have to leave.
A meeting, we have a meeting, that's kind of why we want to.
I didn't hear you say.
I said, a meeting, we have a meeting, that's kind of why we want to.
Unfortunately, the way we work in the sunshine. Unfortunately, the way we work in the sunshine.
I think it's not a bad idea to sit down and talk, I think we pretty often sit down and talk with Cliff on a regular basis, or at least I do. Um, but I don't have any problem with having to be where everybody listens, so that's fine.
Is there a certain agenda that the board would like to present to the Billy Casper group? I mean, that would be.
We should have a few things that when we met, that we discussed, oh, because I hope you have it, everybody.
I, I would like to review the contract. I think there's some things we got, we need to do to address the contract. I think Dan brought it up, I have to bring Dan about possibly including a compensation if they perform at a certain level. I think we should look at that again, not necessarily have them put it in, but we should consider it, because right now they're under no obligation to do anything.
Yeah, it's, it's just important that however it works out, whether it's what I want or not, just so that there's three people on this board that direct how we're doing. That's what it takes, it takes three, not me, not one, takes three. And I want to get it where we can discuss it and decide what the supervisors, what direction they were moving.
You want each one of us to basically sit down with Tanya and put agenda items on, or you want to just have a?
Well, I, I.
You want to have a pre-meeting? A meeting to have a pre-meeting, I, whatever.
I thought we already had, because I gave her a few things, but if she hasn't.
I did.
At the, at the last board to board, we had a discussion about doing this and having the, because Tanya can't share each board opinion personally with other board members, that those opinions be brought back to a board discussion so that we could create the agenda. So maybe we don't have to have a special meeting for the meeting, but we need to have whatever feedback the board members have given to Tanya, that we presented back to us in a board meeting, because we can't talk among ourselves without the attendance.
We will do that, the next board meeting and then have a meeting with Billy Casper, whoever we think's appropriate. I mean, I have no issue with going like anything past Cliff, I don't think Cliff's ever done not responding to anything I ask him to do, but if we want Ron, your, whoever, your, it's probably not a bad idea. I also would say I haven't seen the agronomist from Billy Casper since our greens blew up a year and a half ago or whatever. I don't know that we really need to, but, uh, we're paying for it. I'm perfectly content with Earl and Cliff, whatever, whatever pleasure board is for it. Okay, so we'll, each one of us will talk to Tanya, we will talk about this in the next board meeting and then set up, set up a show. Is that right? Any other staff?
Good morning, supervisor.
The lady with the microphone, right?
That'll be me. Um, just a very quick update with regard to the WDM marketing project. On Tuesday, March fifth, we are going to have our onsite, um, marketing workshop that was part of phase one of the proposal. Um, so during this time, we're, right now, we're recruiting folks for two different focus groups. Um, in those focus groups within the workshop, we will be looking to gather information to begin, um, the creation of the creative work plan that's a part of that first phase. I just wanted to give you a quick update on that.
Yeah, not a lot of for me today either. Uh, I did see, came across my desk yesterday that the Yala matter, you know, we, the district's been out of it for a while, but it's officially gone, it's been voluntarily dismissed and it is completely over. Um, the big DFC foreclosure out there for unit twelve was moving along. Um, I'm taking a week, uh, vacation in March and my goal is to have that filed for the court before I leave for vacation. So that hopefully will be the second week in March. That's all, I found those as questions.
Anything on Tanya Wood?
I did hear back from the, uh, vice president that we talked to, um, we, the, the current plan is to put a, is create an addendum for the, uh, the agreement just, but the, the addendum that we're going to be creating is basically just to put the, the new name or the accurate name of the, of the current, uh, entity that, that owns Tangwood into it, because the agreement that we have is from ninety, ninety-six and, you know, that entity doesn't own it or it's just been passed along. So we're going to be creating an addendum to at least do that and then we'll see if the unit twelve raises anything additional.
The square footage, something is on the next agenda, is that correct?
Next agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Taking the square footage of our unit sixteen.
Yes.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a, my head on Tangwood, are we gonna get an answer or do something with our agreement with them before the end of the year?
Yeah, that's where, but they say the, the addendum, we're putting together an addendum, but that addendum is basically, all that really is going to do is to, you know, reaffirm the existence of the contract and put the correct name, the name of the currently existing entity onto it.
Well, you'll still have to meet with them to come up with something, right?
Correct.
And you, and that's, but that's not even planned at this point.
No, I'm driving, drafting the addendum and I'm gonna, I'll send it over to them at some point for review, before we bring it to the board, make sure that, you know, they're, they're comfortable with it and then the board will bring it to the board for approval.
Joe, the manager, you for board?
Yes, good morning. Just a couple updates on projects. We currently have advertised bid number nineteen dash zero three, been posted online for the Deer Run Automatic Irrigation System. So this is, uh, for the green slips that we talked about. Um, in talking with Earl, we want to make sure we meet this timeline for the summer and the electrical components of this system are very complicated, they do need to be manufactured, so we, uh, have asked for bids to be due by Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, so that is next week. So, um, that has been posted online. The recreational parks and advisory committee meeting was canceled yesterday. That's the committee that we were going to be presenting our shovel port in Bachi, and as soon as, uh, that meeting has been rescheduled, I'll let the board know. And that's all I have, if you have any questions for me.
The, just a point of clarification for people that are normally here of this budget, money in the budget to totally do that. However, we probably won't do that unless we get some type of matching funds from this committee, so, uh, it's basically probably over budgeted by a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand, I think, something a little bit. Okay, unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
Yes.
So I have a quick committee report for the retirement plan committee. Uh, we've met once in October, we had six vendor proposals for a retirement plan, including our current vendor who's ICMA. Uh, we narrowed those top six to a top two listing. We had Nationwide meet us, um, at the last meeting and their representative proposed two options, it was a local option or a state option. We really had about five objectives that we were trying to hit with looking at this retirement plan, so the number one objective was fiduciary responsibility, which the district had as the plan administrator. The state plan relieved all of that fiduciary liability, um, but the cost was a lot higher than the local plan and it also didn't provide very much customer service for employees. So at the last committee meeting, uh, retirement plan committee decided that the local plan was lower in cost, provided fiduciary responsibility oversight, uh, and they requested that we proceed with that plan. Uh, so we are now in the stages where we're completing all the plan documents, preparing the plan as we see fit, as far as employee contributions, um, and all the details, loans, what's going to be included in that fund, uh, for final approval and then we'll be bringing that back to the board supervisors to see if we want to move forward with Nationwide versus our current provider of ICMA. So all the information's online, agenda packets, according back to the section on the website as well.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that it's cheaper for our employees, less liability for us, and less record keeping for us as well, so it makes a lot of sense to do what the committees report. Okay, any others? Public comments?
Good morning again, Bill Dorfres, resident. Uh, I want to comment on the road construction, uh, idea of, uh, with the pulse of engineering is still hearing, still here. And we have, we have a situation, our roads are basically twenty-one feet wide, we have corners that are getting broken, have broken down, and some corners, for example, Woods and I in, on, uh, on intersection of Columbus, that's been repaired at least twice. They put cement out there, they put patchwork out there. What I, what I'm suggesting is that it take under consideration, either put the rumble curving in for a small distance like you have over, uh, on Shoemaker, or put a curving, about a one-foot curving in that areas that are, the roads are being broken down. I mean, this is, you know, a, a great idea that you have a guaranteed dedicated two-hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, and that's going to be an annual type of thing, and, and I don't think it would add that much more to that cost of the repair, but you wouldn't have to have it repaired again and again. People just do not make the corners. They just want to run over, pretty soon you start edging past the corner into the sidewalk and everything else. So maybe, uh, that rumble stripping for a small distance and a small distance for adding curving to the twenty-one foot road. So it just would make some kind of sense, it saves some money in the long run. Thank you.
I would suggest that if you have this Casper meeting, it'd be a special meeting rather than workshops, so you have public comment, for one thing. And back to what I was saying earlier about, because I don't think you're allowed public comment in workshop, right, John? Right, uh, David?
There's workshops, workshops, you're, you have to have a little comment, it's just, it would be at the end of the workshop rather than, you know, during.
Okay, but you can't, but if it's a, a special meeting, each issue, you can, you don't have to wait till the end of the meeting to have public comment.
If it were to be set up that way, we could do it that way.
That would, that would be my preference, I don't, maybe, wouldn't be anybody else's preference, but, uh, another thing, Charlie Shields mentioned about preserve, making sure our block horses are in great shape, and I agree with him one hundred percent. But let's don't burn all our reserves in case we have a utility emergency, because Mike, you wouldn't even go to sleep if people couldn't flush their toilets or drink their water, okay? So let's remember that. We've got old utility plants, old water plants, hey, anytime, and we've got no way of getting money, uh, other than preserving what we got and building on what we got. Uh, even to, to the extent of a, of a capital, special capital assessments, we'd have to do that, because that's the only way we're going to get it. So, anyway, thank you very much.
I forgot to mention, uh, this week we performed training on our new electrical upgrades for the water plant. If any of you are interested in seeing, uh, what we have done to this plant, it's phenomenal how the, uh, upgrades have come together and the training for this is, is finished. So, um, Frank, it's been this week, we probably have a few more, I'm sorry?
It's in service right now.
Yeah, it's in service already. So if any of you were interested in seeing that, let Mike know and he'll take you on a tour. I, I failed to mention that, but that, that is exciting news for us.
Bob Wester, two things, one, the first thing I have, I'm sure you haven't done yet, because you haven't awarded a contract here, but the question was, is something that, what are you going to do with us while you're doing all this?
Construction going on, walls being taken out, where do, do we get our trailers back, which was a lot of fun, or what, what do we do over there? It's something to, that you have to consider.
Well, they've got a plan, I think, and they want to share it.
Do you? You, you. I mean, it's, an extensive thing, I don't need to know, but I just want to.
Yeah, I mean, the dining room, the dining room, we're still going to be able to have mostly open, so, and, and really the, we're going to create an outdoor kitchen, I'm going to buy a barbecue grill and we're going to move some of the equipment just outside and buy a tent. Um, the service will be, uh, it, it just won't be the same. I mean, it's just, I mean, there's just no way it will be, but, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna serve sandwiches, we're gonna serve, we're gonna try and serve Saturday and Friday and Saturday nights. Um, our biggest, our biggest problem will be sanitation, you know, so we'll have to be serving on paper and plastic a lot of times. We are going to be using, utilize, we'll have to utilize this kitchen and really the kitchen, believe it or not, in the snack bar, which has a, which has a washing sink in the snack bar to be able to do a lot of our washing, just of kitchen stuff, but, uh, we are, we're, we're going to continue to stay open, really the best we can. We're, we're going to do our best.
Is there a, a duration, a, a start date and, and a completion date, how long this is going to take?
The estimate that we have currently, we haven't negotiated the contract yet with Marmor, but, um, from April fifteenth and projected completion date would be October first. Now, in April, there would not be knocking down of walls and things like that. April is, is going to be, um, mobilization, maybe, uh, performing some work on the outside of the building is the first step. And, uh, we have, there's other things back there, grease traps and other things. So, so for a month and a half to two months, there, you know, the kitchen will be intact, but it could be by June or so that the, that they will start the actual construction process on the inside.
And you anticipate roughly the first of October to be complete?
Yes, sir.
Mark that down. Um, and the other thing I had is, um, as you come in the, off of, what is it, Ortega Street, when you come in off of, in the back way at the Sun and Lake over here and that, what is that street? Yeah, Schumacher and then you got the, and then you come up to Granada, right? And if you take a right on Granada, right there somewhere, there's a, there's a house that's been started and just sitting there with lumber, I mean, they, I don't know whether they set trusses or kind of did, and it looks like it's, what, what is the status of there? What's going on with it?
We cited them already, uh, because they basically just walked away. They come back and clean part of it up. Uh, we sent them letters, we put them on, on, on notice, but right now, and Tanya can explain about the permits, uh, how long they last.
Mr. Bets, are you?
Tanya and I did speak a little bit about it.
We did. Uh, you're speaking of the actual construction part of it as, is that correct?
Yeah, when you drive in there now, you see this job that's been started and then they quit, and it's obviously because of the, the woods all water stained and.
To our understanding, as long as the permits are kept up to date, there's no requirement on the date of finish, uh, through Highlands County. We don't have any, any, um, rules or regulations that force a, a construction to be finished by a certain time limitation.
It, it just looks bad, it really does.
But we probably should.
So, maybe we should consider something eventually.
It's very frustrating, Bob, because I ask, Tanya can tell you, I ask every, every week. There's another one now on Matanzas that we're at the end of Matanzas, it's.
I just wondered, it doesn't look good and, you know.
That's my.
Maybe we should consider in the future of having some kind of time restraints, because if we can, as a district, you start on this date and you have this many days to get it completed, it'd be a reasonable number, but.
I think everybody would like to see that, the question is, can we, and that's a legal question.
Something to look into?
We already are.
Okay, thanks.
To clarify what you said, I'm not asking for anything free or any special treatment here at the district. I want to be treated equal.
Speak into the microphone.
I want to be treated equal, I'm not asking for any special favors, just be treated equal like everybody else. Going back on Granada, that house, I offered, the guy was willing to buy it to finish it. He didn't want to sell, the house has no permit whatsoever open with the county, so you guys know that. I offered to buy it to finish the house. Also, I would like to propose to the board to create an ethics committee. Mr. Vice President Dunstee, you didn't like my comments, let's create the committee and have them talk to me. You don't like to hear bad things, but bad things are happening. Let's create, I propose the board, I would like to, you guys always, I'm glad that Mr. Brooks says, let's take Mr. Iverson's calls about it, because every time I come here, it's like wasting my time, because probably I won't know one of you guys, and I don't like that. This time, I'm taking matters seriously. I have a verbal contract with Mr. De Jesus, that if I have to go to court, I I have a verbal contract with Mr. De Jesus that if I have to go to court, I will. I have witness to the contract, number one. Number two, I will propose to the board, one way or the other, to create an ethics committee to investigate what's going on. Have you ever asked anybody outside Sun and Lakes the opinion they have of Sun and Lake? Why locals don't like to buy here? Have anybody asked that question? Go around, I built a lot of houses here. What do you think I'm building a city to state? Because we don't have good reputation in Sun and Lake. The office doesn't have good reputation in Sun and Lake. I dare the board, I'll pay for the survey, 20, $30,000 I'll pay for. But let's do it. And let's take action. Not just sit there, listen to me like another Latino talking and that's about it. No.
I just want to say I want to thank you so much. For this seal work, and I have this very large Saturday group, it's called as Chaos Everywhere. And, I couldn't have supported you very much, and I would appreciate that, but I have one question. What are you going to do if they don't finish the project? As we start our lead project, I mean, quite a few people coming out of October that are sending through, it's quite large. And so, is there some plan that if they don't finish by October, then we're going to charge them? That's important, you know, something that takes a couple years usually as a.
I'll make, I'll do everything I can, I'll make sure you're comfortable, don't worry.
Thank you very much.
I'll make sure there's enough seats and I'll make it happen, no matter what.
Same with the Lanai, we've used a.
I'll make sure there's enough seats and I'll make it happen, no matter what.
Same with the Lanai, we've used the Lanai quite a bit this last year or this last couple of months, because we have so many people coming in to golf and then we come in after and all that, and we really appreciate that too.
Charlie Shields, resident. I didn't know about this, but Michelle Archer asked me to, to step up and make a comment. There is a request from the hospital for us to donate $400,000 for a fitness room?
I don't think that's true. The hospital is considering a fitness center and we are discussing it with them. There is no number that I know of.
Okay.
I was told that yesterday and I got, and then the person, it wasn't from you, Charlie, but the person who told me, I just said, y'all got to stop making up these stories. Because no money was ever spoken of, a specific dollar, I'm just saying, no specific dollar was ever spoken of.
And I'm not, and I'm not professing that it was. What I'm saying is, if it is out there, I don't know why we would be giving money to Florida Hospital. That's the only thing I've got to say, I've got plenty of money.
I think Tanya explained Florida Hospital, telling what we're doing, I guess, somebody.
Advent Health is proposing a 29,000 square foot fitness facility along with wellness and nutrition spa. And it's going to be built on their 77 acres here inside the district. They have presented the site plan to me and, and what their, their intentions are in phasing into this project. And they are, they are looking to the district for a partnership and instead of, well, I'll just say, they're, they're bringing back a proposal. There has been no numbers presented to us at this time.
We did have money in the 10-year wish list, whatever you want to call it, capital plan, for a fitness center ourselves. Makes no sense to do two, so it might make some sense to participate with them, depending on how much that is and what kind of discount they might give our residents. That would really be the issue for me and I think for the board, is which one makes more sense from our standpoint. But there is no $400,000, hasn't been no $400,000. There was, I think, a million dollars in our budget initially or something like that. I get it. You're, you're making some assumptions that probably aren't true, Charlie. We might give them some money and get our residents a discount, but we would only, I think there's sufficient brain power on this board to figure out what's a reasonable deal for us and what isn't. And it would have to come to this board for approval in a public meeting, so you, Michelle will get a chance to talk about it again. But there is no $400,000 that I know of. I heard that number too yesterday. I'm like, what, we're, any other public comment? Discussion to and from the board?
I don't have anything in particular, having, I had most of my board discussion in the process of the meeting.
I don't really either, other than to just say that I think in, the sunshine law makes it difficult, but if I understood what Mike was saying at the last meeting, he wanted this discussion with Billy Casper. That's what you were talking about, you wanted us to meet with Tanya. I have done so with Tanya and with Cliff, I guess you have, I don't know about you guys. But to try to put together an agenda for what to talk about, if we talk about anything at all, or if we even have a meeting, but I would encourage you to do so.
Talking about Casper?
Yes.
I haven't talked to her about it yet.
Actually, I actually did a written thing and with questions and they responded to me. I don't care if she shares it or if she can, I have no idea.
I'll be sharing that as part of.
Once we all communicate to you, then you're going to send it out to us. And that, right, no?
No, no. She's meeting with everybody individually and she's, then she's going to be compiling information from those meetings and that will be coming back at a meeting.
Oh, it comes back in, at a meeting and then we'll discuss it at the meeting?
Correct.
So we're, we're going to discuss it twice? Yeah, we're going to give it to her and then she's going to give it to us and then we're going to talk about it.
Well, she can't, she can't tell you what I think. We have to have that in a public meeting and that's just the way it is.
In order for us to know what Mike and Dan.
Why are we, just why are we afraid to talk in front of everybody?
We're not. No, it's just, it's just an extra step that we have to take, because we can't have these one-off discussions shared except in a public setting, which is fine, that's, that's transparency that we have under the sunshine law. It's not a matter of fear, it's just an extra step.
It doesn't have to make sense, you just have to do it.
We could just discuss it now and say, I hate Casper, I love Casper, whatever, but we're not going to do that. I, I just think it's unfair to the people who do pay attention to us, that we don't let them know what we feel like.
You're talking about both of them?
Huh?
Both of them that pay attention to us?
I'm sorry?
Both of them that pay attention to us?
If it's funny, it's funny, I guess, I think it's sad.
It is sad, I would agree with that. And, you know, when you, when you get public comment from people who have been here once in the last two years and don't really understand, it's kind of a. Anyway, yes, that's what we decided to do. It will come back at the next, we will talk to Tanya, if you wish to do so. We will come back and we will have a public, I started to say slaying and that's not true. We will have a public discussion of the whole Billy Casper relationship to the extent that we want to at the next meeting and then we'll have a meeting with whoever we need to have a meeting with from Billy Casper, if I understood it correctly.
That's correct, is that correct? Okay.
Okay. Further discussion. Further discussion. All right, meeting adjourned.